I call the committee to honor our last regular commission meeting of 2017. And we've been out there, we've discussed with this, to come to our meetings throughout the year, and I certainly appreciate that. Just wish we had more people that could come in and hear about our business, be in our question. If you would please bow your head and raise your hands, we will have commissioners' invitation. Almighty God, to whom we turn in times of trouble, in times of need, and in times of plenty, and in thanksgiving. We come to you, O Lord, ever mindful of the gift you gave to us of your Son, so that our sins might be forgiven, and that we might have eternal life with you in heaven. We ask, O Lord, as we finish this year, that you be with the citizens of Harris County, that you guide them, protect them, comfort them, heal them. We ask your blessings on our servicemen and women, both here and abroad, and all of our veterans who have helped over the years to preserve those freedoms that we so dearly love. We ask, O Lord, that you be with us as we go through this Christmas season, that you deliver us safely, and that you make us ever mindful of the need to come to you in prayer. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Wood if he would please leave us in a place of ease.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item of business is the minutes from, the two minutes from the regular session of December the 5th, and also the minutes from our planning retreat on December the 12th. Do you have a motion?
You can be approved.
You've got a motion for approval, do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second, any discussion, correction? Call in favor, six to five, raise your hand. Motion carries. Any parents or citizens?
I have two, but both of them were for item number seven.
Okay. All right, we'll cover those when we get there. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of the application of Tommy Moss for beer and wine on premise at 3565 Georgia Highway 85, Ellisley. The sheriff's office had indicated approval, the health department had indicated approval, and community development had indicated disapproval due to its not meeting distance requirements. We have had the first reading on this, and I should say this is the second. Are there any individuals here that wish to speak in favor of this application? Any wish to speak in favor?
I see Mr. Moss is here.
He's right here, Mr. Moss is right here. Are there any that wish to speak in opposition to this application? All right, last time, I think there was some discussion about that distance requirement. We've asked our county attorney, John Taylor, if he would please research this, and John, I'll let you tell us what you found.
Well, I didn't find a definitive answer, but I have a, I have a, what I think may be a way to do it, a reasoning behind one way or another to do it. Your ordinance provides that for, you can't, the distance means, that's set forth in your ordinance, deals with a planned, a public recreation area. Now, your ordinance is much more restrictive than the, quite more restrictive than the state statute deals with this, because you, state statute deals with only with churches and schools, and also deals with public housing and whatnot, but yours goes even further than that, dealing with nursery schools, daycare centers, adjoining playgrounds, boys and girls clubs, buildings and public libraries, and also includes a public recreation area. Now, the question is, I understand it, it's kind of come down to, you know, is this public recreation area, which is Ellisley Park, is within the, within the zone, I think it has to be beyond 600 feet, I believe it is, and this is about 400, but the question, I think, is, is this a public recreation area? Well, you know, I had looked at your ordinance from A to Z, and it does not say planned or operational or anything else, it just says public recreation area. And I started looking in the Georgia Code, couldn't find a whole lot, and then I got on the online and, or through the Westlaw, trying to see if this issue had ever been, had ever been addressed before by the court, so we could kind of get some idea of where we need to go with it. I was able to locate a case that came out of federal court down in Valdosta from about 20 years ago, that, from the city of Lakeland, Georgia. They denied an order, denied an alcohol license twice for failing to meet the requirements, the distance requirements from the church. And they filed a lawsuit to restrain or enjoin the city, and federal court, district court went along and granted a permanent injunction against the city. And the defendant, the city came in and presented some testimony and evidence that a church building was located within the prohibited distance, but there was also some contrary evidence that the court actually went out and must have looked at it, but the, they said the plaintiff established that the church had not functioned as a church for a long period of time, and it wasn't even electric power connected to it, and that there was nothing to indicate that it functions as a church in any capacity. And then the court went on and said that the church must be a functioning entity. Now, the way I understand what we've got now is we've got Ellisley Park. Now Ellisley Park was conveyed to the county about four or five years ago, and in that conveyance, there were some restrictions that it was to be used for passive recreational activity only, and it was a covenant running with the land, so that if it was violated, of course it would revert. And since then, there has been some money donated to the county to fix the house up and do some other activities on the land, but I understand, as of the present time, it is not open to the public and not functioning. So, following the theory of the case from Lakeland, if it's not functioning, it's not open to the public, it is not a public recreation area as of yet. So, yes, that, it would not, the distance requirement would not apply, and it would be appropriate to grant the ordinance. Now, you can also argue it the other way, that if you could, one step two, you could have a piece of property that, I could own a piece of property that's vacant, and it just stays vacant for years, and then somebody comes in and wants to open up a restaurant and have an alcohol license to serve beer and wine with the meals, then I could always pop up and say, wait a minute, I planned on having, using that for a daycare center, I just haven't got around to filling it yet. And almost defeat anything you wanted to defeat. Yet on the other side of the coin, you've got the operation in progress, you have not the activity going on, you've got the planning, you've budgeted for it, you have done work out there, and at some point in time, you're going to open this up for a public recreation area. And right now, I understand, there's a gate and the public does not use it, so you could go back and look at it from the standpoint of the Lakeland case, that it's not a functioning, not functioning as a public facility. It could be that you turn around and decide, vote, no, we don't want to spend any more money on this, we're not going to spend any more money, we're not going to, we're not going to open it up, and we're just going to let it revert and get it back.
I have a question.
Okay, and so I think, either way you can look at it, I think that, right now, it would appear that it does not, does not, is not a public recreation area, because the public is not using it, and so therefore, to grant the license would, it would not, the distance requirement would not come into play until it becomes functional, and it is not functional there. But you can argue the other side of it as well, and that's what you are here for, is to make informed lives to see what's in the best interest of the county.
My question is about the definition of the word "area," public recreation area, because with this particular property, the times I've been on it, you have to drive quite a distance into the property to get to the areas where there will be activity. So just like with a church building, is the area the actual place, not the property line?
That's the point, you know, you could, because I've been there, you know, I was there when we closed, bought it from Mr. Willis, or did not from Mr. Willis, from other people. Mr. Willis had been in the house and in the business, and I did, and you have a pretty good road here, right down before you get to the house, and there's a Lakeland right beside that. I don't know how many feet that would add, but it would come close to being, meeting the definition of being beyond at the 600 feet. So, you know, the area is from your correct, from the front to the front is short, but still, it is still not functioning at the, at the present time. Now, you can take the opposite approach and say, yes, that's what we're going to plan on doing as a public recreation area, we just have to finish it up, open the gates in. So, there you go. I think you probably, I mean, I can argue it either way. Probably the reasoning behind the non-functioning church, and the language in that case, that church must be a functioning entity, you know, this is not a functioning area at the present time.
Yeah, see, we don't, we don't reserve the launch for anything that didn't work.
No, no.
And I just want my one comment. I can understand, in defense of community development, I can understand that decision. I mean, and then upon further investigation, I can also understand yours, but I did want to say that, in defense of community development, I can understand why that decision was made.
I can argue that side of the case too, you know, it's, that's what it is, it's just, we just have, you know, excuse me, but we're spending a ton of money out there, it's been given to us, and, and that's cool.
I think the difference between the church and this is the church was a church, but stopped being a church. This will be a park, and we're trying to get there.
It's still not though.
Yeah, but it's still not, I get that, but it's like chicken and egg, because we're child's egg.
Yeah, well, you kind of are, but you're in a, you're in a situation where you've got to make the decision one way or the other. There's some reasoning to say, yeah, no, it's not functioning, so therefore, it does not, it's not disqualified, the license wouldn't be disqualified, because it's a quote "public recreation area," and then you add Commissioner Tuning's reasoning to the house, if nothing else, which is in the middle of the property, and they add that much more, much more distance, and probably will max it out. So, that's what...
Thank you, sir.
Courageous and not going to take a stand.
That's what precedes your research.
Either direction, I think legally, you probably, I would say that you're, you know, it's not a public recreation area at the present time, and will not be prohibited, but if it were, if it starts operational and somebody else wants to open up one shortly, you know, within the same distance on the other side of the road, up the road, then I think you would have a problem.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moss, any comments you'd like to make, other than what you made at the first?
I'll leave it in your capable.
All right. Any commissioners have any other discussions at all?
Oh, yes. I believe Brian did the right thing, because he is supposed to interpret the rules very strictly, but my feeling is that it is not yet a public recreation facility, and that if we, that, this is just, it's defensible, but a lawyer can defend anything, depending on case. I have a long family history of people being able to do that, so that's the way I feel.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, like the mission? All right, and we have the second hearing, both citizens wish to speak on either side to it. We've heard from Mr. Taylor, had our discussion, and they'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that this beer and wine license for Tommy's smoky barbecue be granted, based on kind of reasons we have here. Also, it's not as though the business is directly across the street, it's around the park, the hill, you know, so there's not quite the direct correlation that you would have many times if you were next door, or kind of walking distance from, and in sight of areas. If people in the future are at Ellisley Park, they will not be able to even see Tommy's barbecue, going in and out, they would, and stop and enjoy it. But I do believe that the area, to me, it could be 1,000 acres, and we're using 10 acres in the middle, and that would be overly broad, so I believe that area is the area that will be used, and even if it were actively used, I would still believe that this license should be granted.
Thank you, Ms. Juney. Do you have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second. Any more discussion at all? All in favor of the motion for approval, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, first, you, Dr. Michael, and with all the others that are taken care of. Good night. Thank you.
Remember, we have the finest barbecue in Taylor's, right? Just a reminder, it's the only barbecue in Taylor's.
Thank you.
You're still in office, three different places, I have been wrong.
All right, next item on the agenda is community center and recreation facility fee schedule, which, we have an area that has been changed, and so I'd like to let that discussion proceed. Randy, you going to do this, or?
I'll personally.
John?
I'm tired of that.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. We just had Mr. Magus, who's surprised retirement party for us this afternoon, as he's decided after 19 years, he's ready to take the breaks. We do appreciate what you've done for us for those 19 years, and we certainly wish you well and everything good about your retirement.
Thank you, it's my pleasure. And I'll start with citizens of Harris County and this board.
May we, yes, John?
Thank you.
Okay, primarily what, I think we're okay with everything, other than at the bottom of that community center membership fee schedule, those two, two sections in that bottom box.
One second.
Yes, we had discussed about the community center, came about the business license and insurance, we worked together here last week, all of our vendors, except for one, has insurance, proper insurance, all our vendors have national certification for what they're doing, and we propose that our vendors go to, to get a business license, and that the fees would be waived. The second part was concerning the round of outdoor facilities, certified instructor collect, and remit 10% of the class fee to the county at the end of each class, with the class roster. Classes will be scheduled on a space available basis with the recreation staff, instructors shall have general liability insurance, naming the county as an additional insurer, instructors that reside in the county shall have a county issued business license. At the last meeting we talked, they were talking about 30% in the figure, where we now have 10%. 30% is what we get from our indoor vendors, whether receiving heat, air conditioning, and closer amenities for restrooms and things like that, or outdoors, you know, they have to take care of the, suffer with the heat and the colds, and so we decided to lower it down to 10%, and it basically works out, the last time, you know, when we were talking $5 an hour, based on what's online for a beginner's class, minimum of three students, $10 an hour, so 10% gives us, pays us the $3 and $30. And so it's pretty close to what we were shooting before, so, but, we'll move out, we just need to go ahead and fix our courts and start opening up properties to be public to use, provided they follow the regulations for the end.
All right, this, to remind you, we did have a motion in the second class down at the table that we didn't deal with this, so we had the retreat coming up, and we'll talk about, any questions or comments from other commissioners?
When we go on the business license, we discussed that for non-residents, that they could have a business license from their own county, right? So it should be that, that all instructors shall have a business license from the appropriate county.
Please ask why, is that correct? If they have, if they are from the Scoggy County, have a business license, we accept that, right?
Correct. If they are from any city, which we've had one already come in, who's in Alabama, we just need a copy of their business license provided.
I think this just needs to be recorded to reflect that everyone is not showing discrimination, showing out west and showing out business.
Yeah. At our, outside last week, we had a discussion about liability insurance, and there may be a problem with instructors, maybe not knowing where to get that liability insurance. So I talked to John and Ashley, and John did contact some of the other vendors to get, to get some suggestions of where those vendors who do not know where to get the liability insurance, and they gave us their suggestions, so that would be, that would be helpful to them. If they're not, maybe if they're certified, or not, or not an organization, you couldn't get it for that, so that should be helpful.
And staff or company seems to be most favorable for the insurance.
It was around about 150 a year.
Yeah.
All right, any comments, questions? And we do have a motion, they have a second, it's on the floor.
You can amend the motion?
Yeah, what's the motion? You may want to withdraw that motion and make another one to approve this.
The only difference is, we discussed it, there really didn't change any.
Nothing's changed.
Because they were requiring, you were requiring to be certified, and you were requiring to have insurance, the last time we discussed it in more detail.
We changed the 30%, just 10, all the 10s.
Yeah.
No, it was 30.
It was 30, right. Okay. Well, we can do that, Dan, you might be separate while we're trying to just pick.
I need to think there was one.
It was just a table. You just tabled it, okay, so then we can make a new motion, that's what I'll look and see if we did it. So I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion real quick, as discussed.
Okay.
Just making sure it's just business licenses across the board, okay?
I'll send it in.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Favor, recommendations, please signify by raising your hand, motion carries. All right, any other own business?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question as far as my own business. Several meetings ago, we discussed our receiving our financial statements, and I just want to know when we will be receiving them for October. We have asked that those please give it us once, please.
Well, the financial department is working entirely on audit, to have it finished by the deadline. It's going to be 50/50, if we're going to have to await the deadline audit on December 31st, so all hands on deck for the audit. You know, with that secured, then we can jump on the back financial statements, just to lack the resources.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Wood. All right, new business. First item is a tax refund request from Stephen P. Wilson for a five Brooks that I drive, Fort Worth, Georgia. His Advalorm tax on his vehicle, it was due the 7th of December, he sold it on the 20th of November, which is prior to the tax due date, and he is attached, and we have the agreement for his sale of that, and the tax commissioner agrees that the refund should be made. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I have one question, I think it was just a type of, but on the cover sheet, it says he sold the vehicle on 11/20/17, prior to the tax due date, and he paid the Advalorm on 12/7/17, when the actual paper report says he paid on 11/7. So I think it's just a type of question.
Yeah. All right. I don't think that changes anything, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make motion that we approve the tax refund for Mr. Stephen Wilson, we have $125.72, and I'll second that.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands, motion carries. All right, next is the appointment sheet, we have a few to vote on tonight, so I think those are, these are all those who want where we So I think those are, maybe all those who want where we have a yes.
Those who consented to reappoint.
Those who want to consent to reappointment, so I guess we can vote on those, but those that have not, do we have any other appointments to be made or recommended at this point in time?
For the board zoning adjustments, I do for District One, the expired term and then to continue the next term, Lorraine Creighton, her job is taking her away so often that she cannot make the meeting. So Mr. Sitting on the board and not being able to attend, she is not going to be able to continue. And Tim Shelton has agreed to. Tim is from Pine Mountain and has lived in Harris County his entire life and lives down in Catalina now. He is a nine-one-one supervisor at Fort Benning, has his own Pine Mountain printing company. So he works hard and understands the business as well as owning property and has, I think, a good sense and a good balance to him as far as being, and a listener and being able to use common sense, so I recommend Tim Shelton.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Then Mr. Chairman, on the recreation board, we have three people not to be reappointing, three people take their place.
Okay, and those are recommended by the youth associations in each one of those?
Except for the one at large, the Sandra Moss that expressed an interest to be appointed to the at-large position.
Okay.
And that's a commissioner appointee.
All right, so it will be up to us to make that motion if we so desire.
That's fine, Laura.
Yep.
I thought that we had asked that we were going to appoint people that were receiving a resume about a year ago.
You provided the one for the person at large, you provided that last time, Sandra Moss. And the other two recommendations from the youth boards, for that to, for three more.
Does that exempt them from having a?
Yes, sir.
Like a natural man?
Yes, sir, appointee technically used to be appointed, they're appointed. And the only other one would be the housing authority, Kim Bussing, she's in Wayway Hall Park. She lives here in Hamilton though, but she would like to be appointed to the housing authority. If you so decide.
And Mr. Shelton, I did not receive it until today, he'd been sick and child gang married recently, so that's why I didn't see him because it was so late this morning. Would you like to tell you?
I think we got Commissioner Woods makes a good point, we did ask for some information just so we would be aware of the individuals that we're considering. And I think we should certainly proceed with that regardless of whose nomination it is, we should have something from you. So we usually ask any questions.
Usually from the red board, you've got the copy of the letter, I just didn't give that, did not give that to you last time, last week.
Okay. Well, I think, I think your view of that, perhaps we are just going to table this again until the next meeting. And then maybe those of us who still have to submit a name can do that along with the resume.
Can we by next, Thursday?
Okay, so that is entitled. All right. Next item is engineer for the proposed CDVG project in Pine Lake, Mr. Dowell.
Mr. Chairman of Board Commissioners, the county is interested in applying for a community development block grant for the twenty eighteen grant cycle. And a project has been developed. The regional commission is overseeing this project and they went out with an RFP for engineering services for this project. And we did get four responses. You can see them Carter Sluice, EMC Engineering, Hofstra Associates, and Ingram Associates. And you can see their scores done by the regional commission. There was a committee meeting to discuss this earlier, obviously on the twelfth. And staff is recommending that EMC Engineering out of Columbus be the engineer to perform this project if it is successful.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. See there, the two top scores given, one was EMC Engineering in comparison of what, there's no charge for this preliminary phase in the golfing nets. But there would be a charge by each of them of the estimated construction cost should it move forward. And EMC had the lowest bid on that. I will entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint the engineering firm of EMC to launch the project as consultant on Pine Lake project.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve EMC, please say if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Any other new business coming for us this evening? Okay, we get to the county manager's portion. First item on the agenda is personnel request. I believe we had two citizens, Nancy, two citizens.
Yes, sir. You want to hear from them before y'all's discussion?
Yeah, that's fine, Randy, you want to go ahead and?
Mine is a simple budget amendment.
Okay, you want to expand on that?
It's a budget amendment in a matter of six thousand thirteen dollars until the remaining end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
I would like to table it and talk about personnel, any personnel in the executive meeting.
All right.
Should we hear from the citizens before we take any kind of action?
I think, I think it probably should, I think it should.
Tim Marsden?
I really don't have anything to say if I don't know what, I wanted to ask questions or whatever about the details of what was on the agenda, so the only thing that I saw on the agenda was permission to hire a fifty-nine K for the department director position.
Okay.
Chris Morton?
Yeah.
Oh, Christine Ford, I'm saying.
Okay.
In fact, wait, so come in, I agree with Commissioner Wood, this should be tabled and that we should discuss it in executive session. We're being asked to support an increase, a thirty-six percent increase above the minimum start rate to meet that substantial. We're also being asked to support an eight thousand dollar increase in salary above the salary of the current red department director. And based on past history, there have been some personnel decisions that were less than stellar. And my personal opinion on that is that they were not vetted as they should have been. And we have had very little discussion on this budget amendment, which is budget amendment twelve for the years. And I think that it does warrant more discussion by this board.
Let me, let me say this, something, yes, you can discuss this in executive session in conjunction with a personnel issue to discuss the hiring or employment of a particular person or persons. But just to take this as a budget amendment and discuss it abstractly in executive session, you'd be violating the.
And that was a true tip, was to do it abstractly.
Yeah, I was just interested in discussing the situation.
Okay, as long as it's in conjunction with a designated personnel matter.
All right, so what, then table? Next is project updates, Dowell.
Mr. Chairman, Board Commissioners, a lot of things going on, this is about mid-year of our fiscal year, we're about halfway finished. A lot of things have been completed, a lot of things are in process and only a few things that we, that are waiting to be done. Beginning number three, park director, that is ongoing issue. Number five is the countywide software package for a funding county. The sale has been approved and that is ongoing, it's an eight to twelve month deployment period that started very recently. So maybe a year from now, we might be having our new funding county software package fully implemented and being used. Number seven, the camera system for the prison, that is on bid, the bid deadline and bid opening is December twenty-second for that needed project. Number eight, the countywide nine-one-one radio system, contract preparation is ongoing for both the use of it as well as the maintenance agreement. Two sub, I was sick last weekend, couldn't attend some conference calls. Number nine, the telephone system at the, the new telephone system at the nine-one-one center is still operational, as was the cat system. So those two projects are operational, a few loose ends to be tied up, and we hope to close those out and have final payments by late January. Again, on schedule, on budget. See, hitting the hot points, number eighteen, the twenty eighteen LME is being prepared, bids spec should go out late this month or perhaps early next month. So that when the paving season begins next April, next March or April, the county can be ready and we can be up to date on our LMEs. This year we did two years of LMEs, now we're currently on eighteen. So I hope to get that out on the bid spec in late December, early January for completion in the spring. For Coal Springs Road, Davis Lake Road, Goat Rock Road and Waterford Drive. Number nineteen, the additional LME, again, that's some guardrails on some roads and that is in process. Number twenty-one, Hamilton Business Park, improvements to that business park is being, the bid documents are being prepared right now, they should go out hopefully in the next week or two. That is to make improvements to the Hamilton Business Park, turn lane overlays, road extension, upgrade the water system and get that park some reliable internet services for current and future tenants. Number twenty-four, the county attorney is feverishly working on Holland Drive and Kingsboro Road, right away deeds, so we can acquire that right away for paving, hopefully next year. Number twenty-six, Elders Park, that project is also ongoing. Last Friday, Brian Williams and I met with consultants out there to prepare a very, very basic concept plan to keep, to keep that, to get that project kickstarted once again and completed with the budget funds that are available. Number twenty-nine, the wildlife fence of the airport, that's, that project is on bid, bid opening is December twenty-first. Number forty-two, scrap tire amnesty grant. We did get a letter from the state today that we were awarded eight thousand dollars for the grant to be, for a tire amnesty day to be conducted in sometime next year, hopefully the month of April. So that is, that will be an ongoing project. Number forty-three, the library construction, again, it's winding down, it's on time and budget. Our next meeting is January the third for, for the owners meeting to discuss issues and problems. So far there's not been many issues or problems at all, that project is winding down and it should be substantially completed in early January and hope to pay final payments in February. And have a dedication ceremony in March. Number fifty, the Splos continuation plan. The Splos continuation plan has been through six revisions and it was sent to the board for filing. The six revision was recently and the county attorney is preparing those internal agreements for signatures for all cities to sign. Advertising for this begins in late January to meet the main deadline. And number fifty-one, all the fee schedules going to effect, they have been approved on January the first. And that's, that's the hot ones.
All right, is there any questions? Okay, Mr. Taylor, amendment in the Harris County project.
Yes, sir. For you is a proposed addendum to the Harris Gray proposal for the, for the Hamilton Business Park. What this agreement will do will add, add three tasks, task five, six and seven. Back on January the third, you approved a contract with, agreement with Harris Gray to provide engineering, civil engineering design and permitting services for the roads in the, in the park, which would include the conceptual layout, a final engineering plan for meeting and in the group survey. That was approved in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars, there was also a change order made to that on March the seventh that made some minor adjustments and the change order was seven seven hundred dollars. What this one will do is adds these three parts, parts for Harris Gray and they are designated in your, in the material in front of you. Task five would be preparing the bid documents specifications for the Hamilton Business Park, water open way extension, so a new road there. And for forty-seven fifty, then also some weekly inspections for erosion and sedimentation control for sixty-three hundred and forty dollars. And then the construction administration to review shop drawings and supervise the contractor in, in building the road for sixty-five hundred. That totals fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. There are certain things it does not include as specified, if you look at the terms and conditions, there is a termination clause which is for convenience. Everything is basically the same as the initial contract that you entered into except for item three F, which Roman knew before you have miscellaneous and F deals with the governing law on venue back in, in January. We changed, had a similar clause and you changed that in the contract to provide that the venue would lie exclusively in the Superior Court of Harris County. I would recommend that you approve this with that one change.
I have one question.
Okay.
On the recap, it shows task number six at forty-two hundred dollars, whereas in the broader narrative, it shows three pieces to that which totals six thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Which one is correct?
I don't know, I think it says it's assuming, task six, it says assuming twenty, twenty weeks of weekly inspections.
Sixty-three forty.
That's the way I read it, I would think it's sixty-three forty.
Yeah.
So that's another two thousand hundred and forty, so it makes it seventeen five ninety.
Well, it's.
For the total, as, as excellent at this point.
Yeah, it's, it's contingent on rainfall, if you know that. Site visits after rainfall, there'd be weekly inspections and then if there was rainfall in excess of that happening, then they'll have to go out and visit the site and that's where, site visits after the rainfall. They're assuming eight of those is sixteen eighty, so I think that's an estimate of what the cost would be.
It's, it's all estimates.
Oh, that's, I would just, just talk about the higher amount, and then if they don't do it, then that.
Right.
Well, you can approve it not to exceed. The doctor, the way you can approve is not to exceed.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion, Mr. Taylor. Harris Gray proposal for the Hamilton Business Park road extension.
With the higher number of seventeen five million?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second discussion.
The funding source is Splot twenty-fourteen, with other costs are built in.
All in favor, please signify if I'm raising your hand. Motion carries.
I'll second.
Martha. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. I will make the motion then to go into executive session for personnel.
I'll second that.
Merry Christmas to those who are not here when we come back out.
Yes, Merry Christmas to you. Very, very good, you folks.